States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
All right, are there any public comments that are not related to agenda items tonight? I do not have anybody logged in. And we have nobody signed in, actually, ever. Great, thank you. Uh, next is the consent agenda, the minutes of the March fifth, twenty twenty four Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those and then what other questions? Um, I would need to make a correction on these. My last name is Singular, not with an S. Okay, so Dana Wood. All righty, was that on the minutes?
Yes.
What page? I see it on page four. No, there's others, but okay. That's the one that I saw. Perfect.
We'll have to pick it up and pick the person who takes those minutes when he gets online.
Oh, he's actually just logging in. Okay, we'll get that corrected. And then, uh, if that was the only correction, then we'll change that before it's all signed in.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second. Motion by Commissioner Bertone, second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, any conflicts of interest this evening? Hearing none, any agenda changes? I just heard somebody open the door, wondering if that's. Hey.
Hi.
Hello. Okay, so, um, the Rosalinda applicant is here, so I think we're okay to go on ahead and have any agenda changes. Okay, great. Uh, before we get into the Rosalinda site plan review, hi Mark, just wanted to say hello, we see you.
Hello.
And did you have anything to add before we jump into the site plan review? I'm guessing no. All right, so this is a public hearing action item. Rosalinda Site Plan Review, and we'll turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you. Carly, is Mitchell coming?
Yeah. There should be running in. Okay, do you want to come and sit in the hot seat while we're waiting for them, sure? Okay. Can maybe pontificate on your comments, Nicole.
Yes. Let me share my screen here. All righty, so we have, um, an application for the twenty twenty four events for the Rosalinda. Food truck and special events. They came in front of you all last year with, um, pretty much the exact same application to do special events and have, um, Carly's food truck to forks at their events. They are looking to do this again for twenty twenty four as they're going through the final plat of their, um, their proposal for the event center. And so this is what they're doing to bring recognition in the meantime. And that is, um, Commissioner Bertone was asking where the location was and why it's still a county address. And, um, I just want to make sure that I had the same conversation with everybody. So it is a county road address, even though it is annexed into town, it's just gonna stay that address until it's developed. And then there's gonna be different roads and different names and different addresses that'll be assigned at the time that everything is developed and final plat. So that is currently a PUD with the zoning. So what, um, Mr. Wymer is proposing to do with the special events and food truck, it aligns with the comprehensive plan um, of their PUD because they are, that portion of the PUD, the track that they're on in the PUD does align with, um, an event center. So them doing special events in that location are what are supposed to be happening there. Um, for the twenty four season, they're hoping to offer the three different varieties of events, which is the, um, upscale float and picnic package, which they did last year. Um, and you guys had a pretty good attendance with that, correct? And so then they're also gonna offer weddings, celebrations of life, um, and then a raptor fisher drop off location, and then they're gonna be open to the public with, um, limited hours during the event season for twenty four as well. They do, they will not have a brick and mortar, um, presence until their final plat is approved and they get approved for building permits. But they are doing, um, they have their temporary restroom structure that is hooked up there, and then they have, um, the food truck that's gonna be permanently based there during the event season. And parking is still adequate, the same that it was last season or last year, um, CRFR had signed up on their emergency response, um, entrance and exit, and so that's still good. They haven't changed anything outside of that. The hours of operation will be similar. Um, it is private events unless they open, like I said, for those small periods of time to the public. And then here's a picture of the property. Um, there is, just to put it into context, if you can see my arrow over here, this portion of the, um, this is where the Holiday Inn is. And so this is three eleven road coming up, and then there, uh, this whole track and parcel is what's called the Divide Creek, um, parcel, and their event, they're one of the tracks, one of the eight tracks that will be developing there. Overall, staff finds that this application and proposal aligned with the comprehensive plan of PUD. Uh, there have not been any significant changes from last year to this year that flat town staff to say that this wouldn't be a good use of the space. Um, there's still sixty regular parking spaces and two ADA compliant parking spaces. Overall, I think that until they can start infrastructure on the permanent use, this is a great stepping stone for them to bring some recognition to their project. So the planner recommendation would be to approve the twenty twenty four events and food truck with the following conditions, that all statements made by the applicant, both in the application and in the meeting, before the Planning and Zoning Commission be considered, conditions of approval, that the applicant obtains a building permit for all improvements within the property as required by the Silv municipal code. And that would be if they were gonna add any additional storage or, um, structures, temporary structures that they needed to full permit for. That applicant notifies the town community development department of any proposed changes over time, that the applicant fires the proper licensing through Garco County Public Health, and that the town, and the town of Silk are operating the food truck, which the food truck is a licensed business this year already. And has their Garco County sign on. Um, that the applicant retains records of the water deliveries and removal of waste, which is the gray water from the food truck and grease, so that the town can audit rec- records annually or as often as needed. That the applicant pumps the portable restroom trailer as required and provides pump records to the town upon request. That the applicant complies with all state and town liquor licensing, including but not limited to the active twenty twenty three liquor license, conditions of approval and the upcoming renewal, renewal requirements that I believe you have to renew by the end of June.
It's got the thing in the mail.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's coming up, so just make sure that that's renewed, um, that the applicant provides any additional request, requested documents and pays any remaining fees. And that the applicant submit approval to the town from, um, CRFR to come into compliance with any conditions of approval set forth by then for the twenty twenty four event season, um, which it'll be their responsibility to reach out to them and make sure there's nothing additional, but they did come into compliance with the road and the emergency access. And then I do have a recommended motion, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And then, um, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mitchell and, um, Carly to fill in any blanks that they need to.
Thanks Nicole, appreciate that review. Hi Mitchell, nice to see you.
Sorry, I'm, oh, I was almost late.
Does anyone have any questions for Nicole?
I didn't, Nicole. Um, first question, I'm being, entering to interrupt, I have, uh, one of three eleven. Are we having lights here at the intersection? It's gonna be, it's dark when you're coming into that intersection. To make sure that traffic that are coming, they can see like vehicles there, not just headlights pointing out. I mean, it just seems like, I don't know what the amount of vehicles and stuff coming down the property or the event will be. Just kind of curious for safety concerns, coming out of there, making sure that the approach to three eleven that is, you know, it's not gravel or anything, that is asphalted or something, so that they have good traction pulling out of there and it's not spinning their tires and maybe trying to.
Oh, I didn't understand, from the property on two, three eleven?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, uh, because it's a chip seal, right, is what you put down?
It is, but it, yeah.
Something similar to that?
Yes.
Okay, so when, when they're coming, if, I don't know if you can see this right here, um, their gate is right here that's gonna be entering into it.
Right.
And so it's right across from the exit of the Holiday Inn, so there's already an entrance and exit there. Are you saying that you would like to see some sort of?
No, I just wanna make sure it's sturdy.
Sturdy, oh, okay.
To make sure like chip seal's fine. I mean, I, I just didn't want it to be like a gravel, you know, even the approach, you get a couple vehicles, but when they're trying to block vehicles coming down.
Right.
Just wanna make sure safety concerns to, that, you know, nobody that knows what's going on, trying to get by.
Perfect, yeah, that's great. What does this look like? Since you have no infrastructure in place, what does this look like for public happy hour or event things? Like, do you provide anything? I think I saw like a bar seating, like, tell me a little about that.
We're doing, are we doing this as a, as a matter?
Yep.
Great question. Uh, and so you've got the restroom trailer and, and Carly's microphone, tell us to your place. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all right?
Perfect, yep.
So we have the restroom trailer, we've got Carly's food truck, um, as far as like basic infrastructure, we've got lights out there, we have, um, the parking setup is all right. Um, the, the parking lot maintained, clean, clear, signed, et cetera. Um, we're working on uh, probably a mix of like picnic tables and umbrellas and Ironic chairs, you know, kind of either around the fire pit or around, you know, a table, you know, with stuff on it, um. I think we're gonna encourage folks to kind of BYOB, bring your own blanket, right, in some cases, or bring your own lawn chairs. We are gonna be playing this really organically.
Okay.
That we're gonna kind of set it up for a certain number of people, and if we have a great problem to figure out that we have more people than we have tables and chairs, then either we buy more tables and chairs or we kind of, you know, BYOB or some other solution like that.
Okay.
But it'll be a mix of, folks will sort of be hanging out on a mix of like four and five there. Um, probably, you know, five obviously being closer to the river, better views, et cetera. That's, that's a flagstone patio, it's gonna be set up really nicely. The lawn, area number four, much more traditional, it's, we, we got it started last year, it's taken off really nicely. Um, you know, very comfortable lawn games. Uh, I could see, you know, once, you know, in a while on a Saturday, we, we have, you know, some live music down there, just an acoustic guitar or, you know, something kind of interesting like that. Um, so that, that's, that's the setup in, in our heads at the moment.
Cool, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You can speak too.
Sometimes it's open to the public and sometimes it's private.
I think it's gonna be, I'm, I'm curious about the open to the public part. So, we, we, we want to establish sort of baseline hours of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, after work, right, so like five to nine, Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, something like eleven to nine. And then we will be closed if we have a private event booked. Which right now we have two weddings booked, both in sort of September. We've got a couple of other weddings that are talking to us, so it's not like, you know, it's gonna be super regular. So I think the idea is to be, is to be open, communicate well and, and in advance if we've got, you know, a private thing coming up, because we know, right, it's not gonna be, you know, last minute. Um, and signage pulled at the, at the three eleven entrance and off the river will be super clear as whether we're open to the public or closed for private event.
Uh, I didn't see signage up there today, so that's still to come.
It's still to come, yeah.
Um, and so that's the food truck hours as well, eleven to nine, five to nine, on this day, as you, you know, with it. How would, uh, how would a member of the town still find out about it? Do they have to go to, uh, to a website or the, uh, uh, the red, Defiance Wrapping Company website or?
So, so I think at the moment, we've not really totally talked about this, I think a Facebook, just because we're a pop-up, we're not, you know, a permanent deal, I think a Facebook page is probably most appropriate. We'll have some social media, Instagram or TikTok or something else where people can sort of sign up and, and stay abreast of what's going on. And then I think through partners such as Defiance Wrapping, they get a little, you know, either a link on their website or just some sort of, you know, description of, of what's going on.
They take off in Newcastle and they come down here?
They do, they've got a couple of different packages. I think for the shorter, the shorter trips, they'll take off at Newcastle. Last year, there were a couple that they took off, uh, in town in Glenwood. And then I think there was even one where they took off like from Shoshone, like it was a full, yeah, it was like a full, sort of full bill deal.
I think, just, uh, water level depending on how fast they move and, I think, is where they decide to put in.
Um.
And would you?
What the guests are looking for too, you know, some of them are more interested in the, in the after raft, and some are a little bit more interested in the, in the during.
I'm kind of interested in food trucks, so I like to try.
Yeah, I'm excited.
We could launch you from about fifty feet up there, right, and just bring you around the corner.
I'd like to. Uh, haven't seen it, seen it in operation yet.
So we are, so Carly is operating today.
Yeah, um, the food truck's actually open in rifle right now, um, pending this approval.
No, I meant on side door.
Oh.
I've been to rifle, they don't, you know, they don't have everything that I have bought.
The, the food truck is on my soul, yeah.
But, but she's, she's running her food truck now, and she's.
Still in for lunch right now.
And she's, she's.
Well, there was, the, the, the party was a great meal.
Oh, good, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm doing good. Um, I think those are all mine.
And we do have a current website, um, just as you were saying, but it's, we, right now, uh, we don't have all the information on that.
You know, if you have marketing supplies, you might wanna drop them off around various locations in town.
Yeah.
Uh, not mine's, but maybe Misty's.
Well, and like the Kawaye campground.
Sure.
Right, this, the, the tiny homes, the hotel.
Holiday Inn.
The Holiday Inn that's right next door was.
Here in town, that's, that's just a plan, don't worry.
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bertone, that's, I think that's, those are good ideas.
I had a question about how many cars you would anticipate there being like in an event that had max capacity?
So, right now, or the biggest wedding we have booked, which I think is probably gonna be the biggest event, let's say of the summer, because I don't, I don't expect there to ever, we'll, we'll see what happens with these public, with the public events. But I think it's a, it's a hundred, she, she's expecting a hundred and sixty or something for that wedding. And so we generally divide by three. Right, so that's forty-five feature cars, something like that.
Yeah, I have similar thoughts as, um, Eddie did, just concerning like cars getting out of there, and especially for folks that drive that county road a lot, just like not anticipating that there's gonna be new cars coming out of there. Did you end up having any issues with that last summer or?
Didn't hear of it.
Okay.
And.
Some signage might not be a bad idea, just like events ahead or traffic entering, just something that we put up temporarily when we have an event coming down three eleven road.
Yeah.
I live that way, I could see it, you're being a surprise after thirty years of nothing coming out of that driveway.
Yeah, well, there's, there's shade, there's trees there, it's kind of wooded a little bit.
And there's one tree that I always see pulling out, and that thing's gonna come down, it's our property, so I can take that tree down. And then, uh, I was on Amazon just this morning, uh, we're gonna put a stop sign coming, coming on to three eleven, right, so to get at the end of our driveway, there's gonna be a stop sign there. Um, and then, uh, with Tractor Supply, their website, we're gonna, right now the gate is like a ten-foot cow panel, right, it's super cheap, super not temporary, not, so we're gonna remove that. The, there are, the, the two old posts that used to be that are twenty-six feet apart. So I'm getting two twelve-foot, they're called landowner gates, right, it's, it's basically, they'll just look like this and they swing in and out. And, and those things can be closed, they'll have reflectors on it, they'll have the signs that says closed, right, now you. Um, but what that's gonna allow us is two full lanes. If that ever does happen, um, where someone could, could kind of pull up and get ready to pull up to, to turn out and not be in the way of somebody who might be wanting to come in, right? Um, what we, what we've not yet thought about is some sort of, you know, slow or event ahead or something there on the bridge as you're going north. I don't know if that's something that we could just go out and, probably not just go out and post, but.
No, you would have to get with the county and make sure that they're okay with it.
Because you guys, the, the property ends at the bridge, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea, though. I'd be curious if you could, yeah, like make an effort to meet with the county, just to see what they would say about it.
Some sort of heads up.
Hmm.
Okay.
I also had a question with like how this plan, um, is going to like transfer into the, to the final plans for the property. Like this will obviously become part of the event center, I'm guessing, when a more permanent structure becomes available.
I think, yeah, I, I, you know, the, the patio, um, is getting installed sort of with a mind that it's gonna be permanent, right, that it's gonna be like become in some, in some ways the, the front yard of the event center, right? Um, some of those paths that you see like just north of five, just east of four, those are footpaths. Um, you know, we're wanting to put down, you know, really nice crushed granite and those will probably remain. That, um, the event center itself, the way that the, the property lines up, the southernmost edge of the, of the brick and mortar event center will cut through right about where it says lawn in form. Which will be really, really nice, because that's gonna be, you know, close up to the, close up to the river. But I think what this will allow us to do, it, it allows us to have some, some presence, some income, um, while we are, you know, looking at infrastructure, because that's, that's the big thing in front of us, is, is infrastructure. That's, that's the topic right now, right, so that loop road and the pond and everything else. Uh, as best as we can, see if we can maintain some presence down there where we are, where, where that star is as we're doing this stuff. Um, and then, uh, you know, our first focus is gonna be in track three with the beacon, with the restaurant. And that, that restaurant is gonna have some level of event capacity with it, either on the rooftop or outside back on the lawn, so we might be able to just sort of transfer people who we, who are used to coming to us, you know, on a, on a nice Friday afternoon, now they'll just be going straight to the beacon instead.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I speak very ideal, idealistically, so, uh, you know, we, we've got plans B and C in our pockets too.
So this is the first year that you're going to be open to the public. I know, you know, you had come before us last year, we had approved you doing some private events on last summer.
Yes.
What were the biggest challenges that you faced doing those events last summer? Were there any?
Not having electricity.
Yeah.
Because that prevented Carly from getting her food truck down there, and so, you know, for the, the, the weddings we did, one, one ended up being, we did two weddings, two and, and two, uh, celebrations of life. Those were the big events last year. The one wedding was catered by minors, no, by the, just some ladies out of their house.
Right, they provided their own.
Somehow, amazing tacos. Uh, and then the other one, uh, not catering at all. Right? I can't remember. And then celebrations of life, Carly did them, but remotely, and so the challenge was.
We transported it, yeah.
The challenge was just giving the food there in nice conditions.
Running power and the weather was, um, probably a big, a big challenge.
It rain on us every day we had events, and so, um, like that's still.
More events.
Sorry, yeah, no, we didn't complain, we just, you know, kind of grumbled a little bit.
Everything actually went really well. Um, I think that everything went smooth, we had really great feedback. Um, but on our end, I think just, um, electricity and power is, you know, you just have to think outside the box of how you're gonna, you know, generators and, yeah, power cords and things like that for lighting the restroom trailer.
Yeah.
Um.
So we're looking forward to hard surfaces this, this year and, um, cover, so like, you know, two or three canopies, you know, sort of over things, one over the bar, one over Carly.
Just shade structures.
Yeah, rain, rain and shade. So other than that, I, I, I feel like the events were really well received and I think we did a good job.
Last question for me, is the bald eagle still hanging out up there?
Every once in a while you see them, and they're just, they're just in a tree, hanging out looking for fish or something else in the river. But we look, one of the trees fell down, uh, last year, um, so we moved to a neighboring tree. Um, they're there every once in a while, but no nests that I've seen.
Great, thanks.
No, thank you.
Just a follow-up on my comments, you know, I kind of was hoping you would, now that you're gonna be open to the public, kind of introduce yourself and work with the town of Silk. I don't really know what's going on out there, like, uh, sort of seeing plans and future plans.
You have any suggestions? I feel like we're, we're working on that a little bit.
One suggestion would be, are you gonna do something for Memorial Weekend or Fourth of July Weekend, something special?
Yes, yes.
I think let, like I said, let the town of Silk know what you're up to.
Okay.
I hope that they really know.
Well.
Everybody see your bulldozer around back home.
There's a lot of questions, you know, right now everybody just kind of focuses on all the dirt that we've brought in, and that's kind of what we think about, but, um, you know, last year we sponsored, we were a sponsor, heyday, we were part of the, the trick or treat thing and how, how, how to blast, to be, to have the people who ask. But we've not been, because we haven't, we haven't been yet to market.
Right.
And so now, I think we have an opportunity to be.
Oh, you have a car leaving market.
That's right. We have, we, we can be super interested in that.
When are you starting on physical structures of any of this?
Year. Next question, please.
Because I think you're probably gonna get a lot of that.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we have to be prepared to talk to people about this is what you can expect, when you can expect it, getting input from others.
It's lots of like super drafty menus, and we've got like a blurb at the bottom of the menu that talks a little bit about, but, you know, coming in the future and here's the restaurant, and I think we're looking at probably, you know, infrastructure taking the rest of this calendar year, and then track three, the beacon, our restaurant, will be first for us on our list. Um, and I hope that we can break ground on that in twelve months from now.
Okay.
Right, and, and maybe, you know, Christmas or something like that would be our grand, for twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five will be the first structure on this spot.
Yes, okay, yes. And then, and then what we really haven't talked about, because it's just not part of this conversation, but you can see sort of track one plus track two lot one kind of up there, and then, that's, that's what's being retained by the current owner. And he's, um, his plan for that is, uh, multifamily housing.
Right.
And that will probably be somewhat parallel to the restaurant. Totally different owner, different construction, et cetera, but I think the timelines will probably coincide.
And they're talking.
Oh, very much. Very much, we, yeah.
All right, well, this is a public hearing action item. So at this point, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment at six fifty-nine. We do not have anybody signed in for a public comment, nor do we have anybody online for a public comment. Please Nicole, call and close the public comment at seven o'clock. And does anyone have any other questions or comments?
We look forward to seeing you down there.
Absolutely, excited. So I do have a resolution typed up and ready to adopt with, um, with this approval, if you're looking, whoever makes the motion, if they're looking to adoptable. And it would be a resolution PZ four.
I move approval of a site plan review for Rosalinda twenty twenty four special events and food truck with defining condition presented, which includes the, uh, resolution PZ four.
I'll second. Right, we have a motion from Commissioner Bertone, second from Commissioner Wood, all those in favor? Right, we have a motion from Commissioner Bertone, a second from Commissioner Wood, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Looking forward to it.
Happy end of summer, yeah.
We will.
Thank you, Wendy, have a good night.
We'll be later.
All right, the next item is an action item. Five eleven North Fifth Street, adopt P and Z resolution for minor subdivision sketch plan. This one is planner chain. Hi Mark, take it away.
All right, am I unmuted, Nicole?
You are.
Okay, is is Mike Sorenson there?
He is.
Okay. All right, Mike, come on up to the table if you can, I can't see everybody. Okay, as you know, we've had uh two public hearings on this matter, and at the last meeting, we had a motion to approve. And I indicated then that I would put together a resolution for you and excuse my uh voice. But uh that poor respiratory infection um has been hanging on, and now I have laryngitis, but I'm well, sort of. Um, and I'd like especially Mike Bertone to pay attention to condition number eight in the resolution. And let me explain for a minute, because when I looked at my minutes, all I had was that the single family detached house. On lot A should be for a single family. And then Nicole and I had talked, and then, you know, if you're doing something with zoning, well, that's not really. The minor subdivision sketch plan that we uh discussed, and Nicole looked through her notes. And then she updated number eight to say, the house on lot A is to be single family detached use. Without an additional dwelling unit unless permitted and approved through the town. Now, this is R two zoning, five thousand square feet is a minimum lot size. But it does allow a second unit on it by zoning. So, Michael, I want to make sure that that condition reflects what you really wanted to say. And then my other, just a comment, is that um, when you do these uh land use applications. You know, we need to make sure that all the conditions are related to the action involved, and if the intent was to change the zoning on that property. That would need to be a separate hearing that had to be noticed. And everybody, including the owner. Excuse me, would be able to come in and comment on it. So, Mike, is does does number eight reflect what you uh intended?
Well, I believe it does, because the key phrase is unless permitted and approved through the town.
Okay, well, that's good, then uh, that resolution should be good to go. And I hope you understand my thought about trying to mix zoning information with um. Uh subdivision sketch plan, the actual application itself. So with that, I'm open to questions, and then if you have any more um. Um, ma- make sure that Mr. Sorenson has the chance to comment if he would like.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Uh, no comment here. It seems um pretty straightforward, the requirements here, so no comment.
Great, does anyone have any questions for Mark or for the applicant? Yeah. Appreciate you coming back again before us.
Oh, and 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 before I forget, just so you know, the next stage of the process. The applicant, after this is adopted, will have three months to uh put together their final plaid application. And that goes directly to the board of trustees, and there is the ability to get an extension uh if that is necessary. And that's all I have.
So this is an action item, so there is like a um, a vote, a motion for approval, correct, great?
Correct.
I move approval of the resolution of Town of Silk Planning and zoning commission. Proving the minor subdivision sketch plan for property located at five eleven North Fifth Street in the town of Silt, state of Colorado.
I will second. Thanks, Dana, we have a motion from Commissioner Wood, a second from Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bertone, a second from Commissioner Wood, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Nope, all right then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, next we have planners report. This is both manager Centeno and planner Chain.
Don't ask Mark any questions.
Okay, so Nicole can talk, and then if she doesn't have what I list, what I have listed, I'll break it at the end, but. Thanks for considering my voice.
Okay, the first thing I wanted to go over, I'm gonna have you guys add to your calendar, was June tenth is when we're gonna do our next. P and Z and Board of Trustee um combined meeting. And part of that is going to be a work session that we're hoping you guys can come to. Um, and we're gonna tour High Water Farm and the River Preserve. So if you could mark that on your calendars.
Was five five thirty like usual, or?
I think that's what it's gonna be, we're, I'm just putting it on your radar a little further out, we don't have everything that we set in stone quite yet. I just want to make sure that as soon as I have the date, you guys have the date.
So like if you want to do the tour, you would want to start earlier than that.
Yeah, I think.
Do a tour and a discussion.
Yeah.
If you do a tour, it starts at five thirty, that doesn't give us much time, because this one's clocking on the way.
Yeah, and if you have anything in particular that you want to discuss at that joint meeting, definitely let me know, and we can get that on the agenda.
I will be absent for that, I'll be out of the country.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me know.
Have fun, yeah. Um, and then, I wanted to give you an update on Family Dollar. Since, I don't know who all has Facebook in here, but there's definitely been some rumor mills flying on Facebook. So Family Dollar is not thinking, it's on Helicopia's. And um the foundation is solid, there's part of the parking lot. That is, wasn't compacted the right way, and they're figuring out that, we have multiple engineers looking at this, including ours. So part of their parking lot foundation is settling, but not the foundation of the building. And so they're working on um what that looks like to fix that. The tenant finish had their CO um inspection today. That doesn't seal the building, it just seals their portion of it. We are still pending the shell CO. But um they're looking to have that completely ready in the next two weeks, and they're hoping. Depending on the on the drainage stuff that they're still working on for the shell, they're hoping to have that um. Building completely sealed, the business up and going, grand opening by April nineteenth is their their tentative date. So just wanted to give everybody an update on that, um it's not condemned, there's been, we've gotten a flood of phone calls. Um, with some of this stuff swirling around, so. Family Dollar will be opening within the, within this month, is uh, is what should be taking place there. They only have a few more things to button up. And then we do have a pretty heavy um. Agenda for May as of now, unless something filters off or um. Or there's, somebody doesn't get their complete application and uh the remaining documents that are needed. So just a heads up, that'll be a little bit full, we'll see what falls off or what gets added on.
I am being sent to a work conference that week, so I'm not going to be here.
Okay.
Oh, no.
I won't either.
I know Commissioner Wood has already asked the excuse too, so I was really hoping that Commissioner Bertone.
I'm thinking about leaving town. I'm just thinking about it.
All right, well, maybe I could help convince you to swing in the other direction.
And if we know this far in advance, we can also um, if we're not gonna have a forum, we can change the date.
Something big that you're anticipating.
For that meeting?
Yeah.
Not anything that's so significant that if we don't have the amount of commissioners here that we need here, that we couldn't change it.
I need to call those two ladies and see if we can get them to be here.
Okay, I will send an email around to everybody just to get a head count.
Okay.
For the May agenda, yeah, for the May meeting.
Yeah, sorry about that, I was gonna mention it during Commissioner's comments, and then you brought up the May meeting being jam packed.
No, that's okay, no, it's good to know.
Yeah, I also have a work thing, that's why I let you know.
Perfect. All right, well, we will, this is the time we want to know, it's a month in advance, well, that's perfect. So we'll work on that and see if we can't um get everybody confirmed.
Okay, yeah, I would have availability the next week if we had to move it, but.
Okay, perfect. Um. I don't have any other significant updates for you. Uh Camarillo is jumping back on the dirtwork now that it's starting to warm up and they can get compaction again. Rumor traces uh kind of flying through, getting some of their buildings up, they all popped up all at once there, so.
Are we seeing all the buildings, or is there something else on the other side?
There's something else on the other side, yeah, there's a couple more that are still.
Same.
Yeah, yeah, they're they're all between that eight to twelve unit, um so it's one of the two designs that they have going right now. Yeah, so.
And Nicole, I have a couple things. Um, fir- first of all, fourteen twenty one Frontage Road, which is fifteen acres. To the west of Holiday Inn is coming in for a pre-application meeting uh in the next week or so. And um about two years ago, you approved a amended plat for Stony Ridge number two. And they never came forward uh to finalize that plat, they're looking at subphasing. And uh they have a, they have a new engineer, and that supposedly is wrapping up and will be coming back in front of the board. Sometime, and the planning commission if necessary, sometime in the next couple of months. And then, as I've told you, the last three months, Aaron's Nest still has not submitted their application for. Annexation and B U D zoning, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. Yes. Any questions on the planners report?
I will give you a quick a quick update um on the Easter icon on Saturday. We had chief was estimating, I'm not a very good estimator, but chief was estimating around five hundred kilos.
Ooh, my gosh, that's so.
So, which was really surprising, because the weather was like on and off, yeah. It was, it was nice during the event, though.
Did you have enough eggs?
We did, we we filled about twelve thousand eggs.
Oh, oh my gosh, that's incredible.
Yeah, we are very thankful for the four H groups that come and help us fill eggs.
I mean, we didn't get a request to come help this year, maybe I just missed that, but I know sometimes it's past you guys every.
Have you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the four H groups have really been, that's how they're getting their volunteer hours. So they've been coming and filling eggs, and then we had um National Honor Society kilos. From the Coburn High School come and help actually run the event.
Nice.
So it's, yeah, everybody's getting their volunteer hours, so it's really great.
Yeah, did the town reach out about that, or they approached you or?
Um, we've had a partnership with the Honor Society since, really since twenty twenty. When they, there was no other opportunities to volunteer, and so they had um communicated with me about. Doing cleanups or anything that could be done, like kind of separated, and so. They, that's when they started working with us, so that's when our partnership with the Honor Society was really creative.
Fun, yeah, that's great.
And then four H, they they reached out to us two years ago, and they've just continued to come help. So we had a four H group that uh plants flowers out front and on Main Street. And so once the four H groups kind of realized, like, oh, wait a second, the town of Silt is open for volunteer hours, so. They, yeah, they helped with a lot of different things.
That's great, thank you for doing that, I know when events are on weekends, it just feels like you don't have a weekend, so.
Yeah, that that's a fun one, though, so I did post pictures on Facebook. And uh and we had face painter, and then a different four H group brought a a petting zoo. They brought their four H animals and set up, yeah, it was really fun, yeah, so it was good.
Sharing, yeah, great.
And then our our Arbor Day is the next um event that's coming up on the nineteenth, so we'll be.
Nineteenth of April.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Where's the tree being planted?
That is still being determined, still being finalized. Uh, but it, Joe was gonna go around and do an evaluation of all the parks and kind of determine where. Had been thrown around with uh the the Tara subdivision. And then we had talked about, last year we did Flying Eagle, we had talked about Veterans, but that one's being redone. And we might just start making the Arbor Day part of our annual tree planting to try to replace tree that Veterans. So, yeah, we're, we're still figuring it all out, but I have been told it is gonna be uh. I think it was an autumn blaze maple, so it'll be pretty during the fall. That's about all the information I know, and then we have a Boy Scout um troop coming to help plant, so.
Great.
Yes. Any Commissioner comments tonight?
In reference to this commission, I think it's a great group of people. There's been a decision made within my family that we have to make a choice. And so with that, this would be my last night as a commissioner for the town of Silt. I do appreciate the opportunity, it's parts in fact, but the decision has to do with health and family. So with that, I applaud this group, and those that are moving up to positions of voting. The opportunity comes where we have to make a decision, and we're gonna be moving to a state north of us. Uh, family is requesting us to be closer to them due to age. And also they need help with their business, so we made the decision to um, we laid this beautiful town. And. Still kind of choke out, but this commission has been a good experience, been very good. And I, town has good leadership, as well as the commission, so with that, that's my comment.
Well, thank you, Rob, thank you so much for your service over these past few years, and it's been such a pleasure getting to know you, and I think the comments that you make. Not only to us, but to the public that gets to come in here and see kind of more of what we do, I'm always just, you've really been a mentor to me in this seat. So we're really gonna miss you, thank you so much for your service.
Be great support to me, Rob, and I appreciate all of your comments, uh even though we didn't always agree, they were good comments. And they were, you know, they were on point, and you knew what you were talking about, and you certainly have a. Care for the town, not only for the residents, but also the commercial part of the town, however advanced. And I think you're commanded, should be commanded for all of your actions here at the board level. Thank you.
I appreciate being able to learn from you in the short time that I've been on here. Just watching what you say and learning from you, and you being a mentor to me as well, and coaching me to speak up. So I appreciate that a lot, and we miss it.
And that makes it more important that we have better attendance at the far end of the table.
Yeah, I agree. I know a lot of times folks are pretty good about letting us know when they're not able to make meetings, and I don't know, folks, even the, you know, Vanessa or.
Jennifer emailed the town.
Either one, really, yeah, that's surprising to me, hopefully everything's okay.
Well, you will be missed, Rob, very much appreciate you.
Come back and visit.
Thanks, Rob, for everything, I was hoping you'd stick around and be president of the HOA, damn it.
Well, today, we got a nice dream interview up there. Are you doing that too? Good for you. By the way, thank you for all the compliments, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Rob.
Moving forward, you have lots of challenges, each of you. Um, ours is a whole new adventure, and with that, um. I look at the positive part of it, um, again, this has been a great group. Mother, girl, family, take presidents.
Yeah, absolutely.
Over, you know, other issues, so that's why a decision was made to do that, so. They're thinking, but it's happened, anyway, appreciate the leadership too, that we have. The work of the staff, always on top of it, they've always been good, long hours. Now you can do that as a youth, or as a youthful versus less on age of. I just want to say everyone's been good, so.
Yeah, I think so. They've seen it, though. With that, we'll be needing to be filling that seat and putting the word out, so.
We will do that, yeah, sadly, but we will do that. We will do that, yeah, sadly, but we will do that.
Thanks, cool. All right, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Everyone. Rob's dating.
Sorry, Michael did the motion and then you seconded it.
Oh, yes.
Rob, where are you moving to?